Good morning, everyone. Call this meeting to order. If everyone will please stand for the right. I would like to make it in the name of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to have a moment of silence for Correction Officer Fred Demick, who passed away this past week in Lackawanna County prison. It was a medical issue, and he was a good man with three children. If we can just have a moment of silence, please.
And he was very young.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank the German Borough officials. Commissioner, you want to?
Oh, okay. Council President Frank Kulik, Councilwoman Tricia Dabney, Councilman Jeff Morcom, Councilman Kevin Napoli, Councilman Carl Tomein, Councilman Robert Hunt, Councilwoman Kyra Davy, Mayor Anthony Fuga, Borough Manager Shannon Lee, and Borough Solicitor Attorney Larry Moran Jr.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the approval of the minutes of last meeting.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Opportunity for the public to address the board agenda items only. No one? Okay, thank you. Okay, proclamation presentation 220147, proclaiming declaring June 1st, 2022 as Northeast Pennsylvania Philharmonic Day in Lackawanna County. Mr. Schirmack.
Whereas the Northeastern Pennsylvania Philharmonic, a professional symphony orchestra based in Lackawanna and Luzerne Counties, is celebrating 50 years of performing live concerts and providing education programs throughout our area. Whereas formed in 1972, the Northeastern Pennsylvania Philharmonic's mission is to present live symphonic performances and music education at the highest level of artistic excellence, enriching and engaging the people of our region. Whereas the first performances were held October 21 and 22 of 1972 at the Iram Temple in Wilkes-Barre and the Masonic Temple in Scranton respectfully. Or, yeah. The golden anniversary of the Northeastern Pennsylvania Philharmonic will be celebrated at the gala on June 5th, 2022 at the Fox Hill Country Club in Exeter, Pennsylvania. Whereas the only professional symphony orchestra in the region performs masterworks, pops, Holiday Chamber, and Young Peoples concerts, as well as the Fourth of July concerts. The orchestra's music in our schools and the Philharmonic's jury mentoring programs enhance and enrich the lives of our elementary and secondary students from all parts of Northeastern Pennsylvania. Now, therefore, we, Jerry Notariani, Debbie Dominic, Chris Schirmack, Commissioners of County of Lackawanna, Pennsylvania, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim June 1st, 2022 as Northeastern Pennsylvania Philharmonic Day in Lackawanna County. Congratulations.
I think we're going to do a photo, Jerry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And the July 3rd concert with the Philharmonic will be back this year on courthouse square. So we hope you can all come out to that.
Tell people, I'll tell them you're going.
Thanks to our legal team.
I'm sorry. Just push my luggage in there.
Come on, I got it.
If you leave it up, I'll move over with Commissioner Schermack.
Mm-mm, I like being behind the chair.
Wherever you guys want.
Or do you want me to move the chair? You're going to tell me to move the chair.
I'm going to tell you to move the chair.
You're killing me, killing me.
You just tell me you can hold that. Here, just slide this out of the way here. You guys.
I'm sorry.
Slide back.
Tight back here. Okay. You know, you guys are the stars.
Everybody step this way. Everybody take one step this way. Keep coming. Okay, right there, it's good. Everybody look at me.
Hold on, I'm not ready.
All right, let me know when you're ready. All right, smile. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you.
You guys need to come in.
Aw, thank you, I know.
This is fun today.
You need to talk to the ladies.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about the upcoming concert? You know, give us a little.
Sure, sure. Well, first of all, I'd just like to say that. Oh. I'd just like to.
Well, you can talk into the mic.
Okay, all right. I'd just like to say that all across the country there have been orchestras our size who have gone into great financial debt because COVID has negatively impacted audience sizes this year. And I'm happy to say that that did not happen. That was not our reality this year. Quite the contrary, I felt a lot of support from community activists who just felt strongly that this orchestra has to get through this rough period. And so there's a real sense of gratitude in community that we all feel. We're really happy that on July 3rd we'll be back in downtown Scranton for the Independence Day celebration. And on June 11th, we're doing a joint concert with the Ballet Theater of Scranton in Covington Park. And so that's the way we'll close our season this year. And next year, we have a really exciting lineup of performances. So hopefully by that time, the concerns over COVID will increase our audience and life will be a little bit easier. Thank you.
It's actually a great event on July 3rd. I love it.
Yeah, it is, it's.
I think it's a wonderful thing that you do.
Thank you so much. And this, by the way, is beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Forgive us for leaving.
It's okay. I'm sure you're busy. Okay, resolution 220146.
Approving the current payables. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Hold on one second. You still need to take the vote on the proclamation.
What's that?
You still need to take the vote on the proclamation.
Oh, okay.
That's why I think this was.
On the proclamation. I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. Resolution 220146.
Approving current payables. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the following payables. Lackawanna County's general fund numbers 341-380-342-356, inclusive totaling $1,642,337.37. Electronic fund transfers, including all payroll accounts, totaling $7,876,071.42. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on June 1st, 2022. Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Controller, any issues with the payables?
No, the thing's been audited and approved, Commissioner.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
My question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Resolution 220138.
Approving Lackawanna County's Community Reinvest Program applications. Whereas the Board of Commissioners has established the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program, and whereas the Board of Commissioners are interested in assisting local communities, organizations, and agencies in a revitalization of neighborhoods since they are the foundation for families and community values, and whereas the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program has been allocated monies from the Lackawanna County Economic Development Initiative to be made available to county municipalities, municipal authorities, and tax-exempt charitable and educational organizations. And whereas Lackawanna County is hereby authorized, the Chair of the Lackawanna County Board of Commissioners to sign all documents related to these grants. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby allocate the funding from the Lackawanna County Community Reinvest Program to the following applicants for the following amounts pertaining to: Number one, the Covington Independent Volunteer Fire Company. The project description is infrastructure update for interior lighting. Total product project cost is $11,327, and the amount allocated is $5,000. South Abington Township. The description is the handheld portable radios for police officers. Total project cost is $10,146, and allocation is $5,000. The Einig Christmas Light Committee for the Sturgis Christmas Lights 2022 Phase. Project cost is $5,000, and the allocation is $5,000. The Crystal Fire Company, number one in German. The project description is the apparatus bay for refinishing. The total project cost is $18,792, and the allocation is $5,000. Dummore Borough. Bucktown Music Fest. The total project cost $5,000, and the amount for the program allocation is $5,000. Lackawanna County SWAT Team. Technology Update Phase Two. Total project cost is $4,980, and the allocation is $4,980. United Neighborhood Centers of NEPA for the Pine Brook Revitalization Plan. Total cost is $58,120, and the program's allocation is $5,000. Blakely Borough. For the Blakely Borough Police Department Training Update Project. Total cost is $5,148, and the allocation is $5,000. Abington Memorial Post 7069 VFW. For beverage coolers. Total cost $4,325, and the allocation is $4,325. The Archibald Athletic and Sportsman Club. Renovation to the Little League Outdoor Batting Cages and Sidewalks. Total project cost is $14,400, and the allocation is $5,000. Moscow Borough. For the Fence at Golden Park Phase Two. Total project cost is $8,000, and the allocation is $3,000. Jessup American Legion Post 411 for the Door Replacement Project. Total cost is $6,690, and the allocation is $5,000. Eagle Hose Company, number one Dixon City. Seek for the Thermal Imaging Cameras $4,867, and the allocation is $4,867. The Dummore Missy League. Softball Field Renovations and Purchase of Field Maintenance Equipment. Total cost is $7,702, and the allocation is $5,000. The Troop Hose Company, number one. Resurfacing of the Banquet Hall. Total cost is $15,000, and the allocation is $5,000. Waverly Community House Incorporated for the HVA System Upgrade. Total cost is $250,000, and the allocation is $5,000. The Einig Sturgis Volunteers Hose Company, number three, for Safe Communications Project. Total cost is $5,575, and the allocation is $5,000. Scott Township's Hose Company for firefighting portable pump. Total cost is $6,197. The allocation is $5,000. The Northeast Philharmonic for Nebraska Semble for the Scrantastic Spectacular. $5,600, and the allocation is $5,000. German American Legion Post 610. Kitchen renovation project. Total cost is $5,400, and the allocation is $5,000. Chinchilla Hose Company. Ambulance stretcher upgrade. Total cost is $15,470, and the allocation is $5,000. Eagle McClure Hose Company, number one, for firehouse expansion and renovation. Total cost is $2,305,000. The allocation is $5,000. Arcadia Corel for the Summer Singers. Total cost is $7,900, and the allocation is $5,000. Scranton Lackawanna Resource Development for the Veterans Housing. Total cost is $34,500, and the allocation is $5,000. Queen City Hose Company, number eight in Elephant. Engine Bay Food, Engine Bay Floor Resurfacing. Total cost is $5,960, and the program allocation is $5,000. Lackawanna Heritage Valley Authority for the Mayfield Recreation Area and Trail Project. Total cost of the project is $345,165, and the allocation is $5,000. Finally, the Dalton Borough for the Second Annual Downtown Dalton Flower Basket Campaign. Total project cost is $6,955, and the allocation is $5,000. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on June 1st, 2022. Here to answer any questions on that is our Economic Director, Ms. Brenda Sacco.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone. This resolution is approving 27 community reinvest projects totaling $132,172. They focus on revitalization, improvements of communities and neighborhoods. This is the first round of 2022 and the 24th round of the program. The overall public-private investment since its inception is over $20 million. Any questions?
As usual, Brenda, you're doing a phenomenal job down there. And these are all important to all the communities. Every little bit helps.
Absolutely.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks, Brenda.
Thank you.
Resolution 220140.
Approving the Emergency Management Performance Grant Agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve and authorize the grant submission by Lackawanna County Emergency Management to the Pennsylvania Emergency Management Agency for the fiscal, federal fiscal year 2022 Emergency Management Performance Grant Agreement in the amount of $52,036. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on June 1st, 2022. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is the Director of the EMA, Mr. Tom Taylor.
Morning, everyone. The Emergency Management Performance Grant. This grant is from Pima and pays up to 50% of the Emergency Management Director slash Coordinator's salary and benefits. Any questions?
This is an annual thing that you do, Tom, right?
Yes, yep.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Tom? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thanks, Tom. Resolution 220141.
Entering into a master service agreement. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a master service agreement with Forerunner Technologies to provide parts coverage, software assurance, remote monitoring, remote support, dispatch support services, and/or dedicated onsite support services for the Department of Information Technology. Agreement to commence immediately and shall end on May 31st, 2023 at a cost of $38,697.60. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on June 1st, 2022. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our IT Director, Mr. Mike Brown.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Mike.
This master service agreement is an annual renewal for services to keep our phone system up and running. And while it's recently expired, we really need to get this back in to actually resolve some of the issues that we're having with our phone system. As we're looking into being at a time for renewal to look at new products that could probably provide us with a better phone service. Right now, we will need to have this agreement signed.
That would be good. I mean, ever since we've been in that building, the phones have been an issue. So it's good that you're looking to do something about it. Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Mike. Resolution 220142.
War on the Office of Drug and Alcohol's Audit Services. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby award the audit of Lackawanna Susquehanna Office of Drug and Alcohol Programs for the years ended December 31st, 2021, 2022, and 2023 to Kohansky Company, with the fees for the services to be $12,500, $12,875, and $13,250. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on June 1st, 2022. Mr. Chairman, here is Lackawanna County's Drug and Alcohol Coordinator, Ms. Barbara Durkin.
Good morning, Commissioners and everyone. I'm here to request your support for the Department of Drug and Alcohol Programs to enter into an audit with Kohansky and Company for the 2021, 2022, 2023 audit for our office. This will be the first year we'll be using Kohansky. We've used another auditor in the past. We have the cost budgeted into our budget, so there should be no issues there. Happy to answer any questions anyone has.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
Okay, entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, thanks, Barb.
Thank you very much.
Resolution 220143.
Approving the Area Agency on Aging's Amendments. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Area Agency on Aging's Amendments for fiscal year 2020 through 2023 with Revolutionary Home Health, Telespond Senior Services, Neighbor Works, and the Greenhouse Project. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on June 1st, 2022. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is the Director of the Area Agency on Aging, Mr. Jason Cavulich.
Good morning, everyone.
Morning.
The First Amendment is for revolutionary home health care. They had missed the first opportunity we had for rate increase. They had some paperwork they owed us. They sent submitted it, and we were going to put them through for the rate increase that other providers have had for personal care. The Second Amendment is for Telespond Senior Services to do a pilot with us. You know, there's a direct work, a direct work, a direct care workforce shortage in Pennsylvania, and it's impacting Lackawanna County. They're going to help us pilot to help older adults who are on the waiting list for a direct care worker find other individuals who might be able to help them within their home. So this pilot will be for $75,000. Telespond will help us recruit and vet people to enter people's homes and help them with some of their direct care needs, such as bathing and grooming. The second piece to the Telespond Amendment is for the Senior Companion Program. It is a match for the federal grant that they receive every year to pull down dollars to run the Senior Companion Program in Lackawanna County. For Neighbor Works, these are all investments in Aging in Place services. These are one-time awards so that we can see small projects like people's home repairs on porches and gutters, backyards, getting their grass cut, hedges. It's also for some safety modifications, too, in people's homes to help them with, you know, light repairs around the house and to make their bathroom safer, such as grab bars. And the other is for the Aging in Place Resource Connection, which helps individuals that enter into our Aging in Place services that might need connections to other services, such as meals or personal care services. The last piece is for the Greenhouse Project, and that is a project that we have with Telespond also. Telespond has a garden in their back, in the back of the facility that has not been utilized to its full capacity. The Greenhouse Project is going to help us, one, revitalize the garden, and two, do programming for older adults that have Alzheimer's and dementia that attend Adult Day. So it's an interactive, it's an interactive program where those who are attending the Adult Day services get to interact, do the community gardening with supervision and direction, and therefore increasing the quality of life that they have while they're attending Adult Day services.
Anyone have any questions for Jason? And there's no question that we have an aging population in Lackawanna County, and your organization does a phenomenal job. And it's these type of programs that make it possible for us to help our senior citizens and everyone involved, and their family members that have to care for them. So I really want to thank you for everything you've done, and I appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, Jason.
Thank you, everyone.
Okay, resolution 220145.
Approving the OYFS Provider and Professional Contracts. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby approve the Office of Children and Youth Services Provider and Professional Contracts for the fiscal year January, July 1st, 2022 through June 30th, 2023, as attached here to: Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on June 1st, 2022. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Director of Health and Human Services, Mr. William Browning.
Morning, Commissioners. These are just the annual renewal of existing contracts for both the Juvenile Justice and for the Child Welfare. The provider contracts are for placement resources used by both the Juvenile Justice and Child Welfare, and it's a combination of foster care, residential treatment, and drug and alcohol treatment facilities. The professional contracts are related to treatment resources, community services, such as parenting instruction and legal services.
Anyone have any questions for Bill? I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
On the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution 220144.
Entering into a memorandum of understanding with the ALPC. Be it resolved, the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County is hereby enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Administrative Office of the Pennsylvania Courts. On behalf of the Lackawanna County Drug Court and Mental Health Court, the ALPC shall provide $38,800 to be split between the following: Adult Drug Court, Adult Co-Occurring Court, DUI Court, Adult Mental Health Court, and Veterans Treatment Court. Adopted at regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lackawanna County, held on June 1st, 2022. Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is our Director of Treatment Court Coordinator, Ms. Mary Liz Loftus.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we have a breakdown of what we're asking for, for the grant. This grant is very helpful for our treatment court. People pay for incentives. They find that incentives help people stay on track when they're getting clean and sober. So that's the one benefit of this grant. A lot of other grants don't pay for those incentives. So we have it for, to get incentives, and then also to help people with rent because, as you all know, the rent has gotten extremely expensive in this area. So we try and help people that might be struggling with rental assistance, transportation, and there's a breakdown there. and there's a breakdown there. I don't know if anyone has any questions.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, Mary Liz.
Thank you. Also, I forgot to mention, our treatment court graduation is tomorrow night at five o'clock. If anyone can make it, we're doing it in front of the courthouse. And also, like I said, you guys did a great job, I don't know where Brenda is, with that Lockawana County on the Mountain. That was a wonderful day, so.
Thank you.
Awesome thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Resolution two-two-zero-one-three-nine.
This is an appointment to the Workforce Development Board. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County is hereby reappoint the following individual to the Lockawana County Workforce Developmental Board with a term to commence June first, 2022, and continue through May thirty-first, 2025. Mrs. Brenda Sacco, Director of Lockawana County Office of Planning and Economic Development, sitting as the Representative of the Economic, Community Development. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County held on June first, 2022.
I think everyone's aware of certain requirements on that board, and we have to have a representative, and we're lucky to have Brenda Sacco as ours. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion. Second.
Question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Resolution two-two-zero-one-four-eight.
Appointment to the Industrial Development Authority. Be it resolved, Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County is hereby appoint the following individual to the Lockawana County Industrial Development Authority. Attorney John Appleton, three-four-five Wyoming Avenue, Scranton, Pennsylvania, one-eight-five-zero-three, term to begin immediately and expire December thirty-first, 2026. Adopted at a regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners of Lockawana County held on June first, 2022. Mr. Chairman.
A lot of our boards that aren't the ones that are popular have kind of fallen the wayside in the last few years. So we're trying to rejuvenate them and get them more active, and this is one of those particular instances. I think it's a great idea, and I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion.
You said, oh, sorry. I thought you, I thought you made the motion. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Thank you. Motion two-two-zero-one-four-nine. A motion to award the broadband outdoor fiber connections to Joyce Electrical Inc., three-three-three Second Street, Inham, PA, at a cost of twenty-five thousand four hundred ninety-one dollars and eighteen cents. And to Gaet Communications, ninety Narrows Road, Plymouth, PA, at a cost of thirty-five thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, pending solicitor's review of agreement.
Mr. Chairman here to speak upon that is the IT Director, Mr. Mike Brown. Do you have any questions for him?
Welcome in. Good morning, again, Commissioners. This was responding to an RFQ that we actually had out for a bid process of actually getting professional services done within several of our buildings to improve communications and speeds within the buildings themselves. Gaet came in at Lil''s bid for our Lockawana County Government Center, and Joyce Electric did a lot of work in our courthouse. So we saw that the bid that they put in, and it was approximately a little bit three thousand dollars higher, but we felt that that was a better choice to do because they've done all the work, and they're doing to the Polycom installation, and they know all the pathways, and they won't have to do a lot of extra engineering to resolve the issues there.
It's an old building, and I think it's a great idea that it does, Mike. Anyone have any questions for Mike? Okay. I've made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Another question? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
Okay. Opportunity for the public to address the board.
Do you guys want to do VigilNet?
We'll do it next. Under Commissioners Other Business.
Okay.
Good morning. My name is Frank Kulik. I live in German. First, I'd like to address the board as a private citizen, and secondly, I have something to say as President of the Council. First, as a private citizen, I want to thank the board for moving forward with the county reassessment. I say that as a private citizen because I'm not sure everybody on our council agrees with that, but I've been a big advocate of that for a long time, so thank you for that.
You're welcome.
As President of the Council, I'd like to thank the board and Mrs. Sacco for helping getting our grant for our elevator, which you probably saw as you came in. That elevator will help us revitalize the upstairs. We'll be seeking more grant money at some point for windows and to remodel the offices and fully utilize the building, which is a pretty nice building.
It's a very nice building.
I graduated from here in nineteen sixty-nine, so it holds a special place in my heart. Secondly, I have a question. We met, it was quite a while, probably a year ago, with, and one of the people at the meeting was a staffer from Senator Casey's office, and it was about the American Rescue Plan funding, which Germans are very thankful we've received, I think a hundred thousand dollars last year, another hundred thousand dollars is coming. But we were told at that meeting that we should be very careful how we spend or when we spend that money because there's a good possibility that the money to fund it down from the state to the county, may, some of that money may be used for municipalities in addition to what we got directly. So my question is, is there any plans for any of the county money to funnel down to municipalities? And thank you for coming and holding your meeting here. We appreciate it. Actually, Mrs. Sacco can address that a little bit. She has an idea of what we're trying to do. It's great when they give you money, but you have to be very careful when you spend it.
We like that.
So we received money last year.
Brenda, come up.
So the, the first money that we got that went for the COVID came down through the federal government to the state government to us, and that was in 2020. And I believe we had done some COVID-related mitigation efforts here within each municipality. So that was our first money.
The CARES Act.
The CARES Act, yes. The second is the American Rescue Plan funding, which came down last year. We received our first tranche, and like you, will receive our second tranche. So we have had a lot of impactful initiatives and grants, and one of them was the Get Back on the Mountain. We've had nonprofit grants. We've given out to our small businesses and, and our musician grants as well. So we're, you know, we're always open to different needs of the municipalities. So if you have specific needs, you can reach out to me, and we can discuss it, and then I can work with the Commissioner. Thank you.
We, we actually hired an accounting firm to help us monitor what we did do with the money, what we are doing with the money. The first round in 2020 was a short timeframe, is when it had to be spent, and we had to be very careful with that. Now, this time, we've got a little more time. The government was a little more reasonable, a little more logical, a little more sensible. So we are moving forward, and we're very cautious in what we do, and we're open to any conversation with anyone about how we can spend that money appropriately.
Yes, and I believe our, our new website recently launched, and on the economic development page, there's a list of, of different projects and initiatives that we had utilized the original CARES Act money and the money that we're getting from the American Rescue Plan as well. So.
And the, the new website, to credit to Mike Brown and Rick Neteri and Tracy Hart, it just launched yesterday, and it was quite an undertaking, and it should make it easier for everyone to navigate.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. So that, that's an important part of, we're trying to make it an easier, friendlier way of doing business. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
Good morning, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Don Scartelli. I'm with Scartelli Contractors. We received a letter in the mail yesterday from Lockawana County regarding the McDade Park Splash Pad project and a letter referencing budget issues. I spoke to the project engineer a few days ago, who mentioned to me that no one has contacted him on the project. And I just wondered, is there any, anything that can be done in order to move the project forward so it can be completed by your August nineteenth deadline date? Perhaps value engineering with the owner, project engineer, contractor, along with Voitek. The schedule at this point is, is very tight and needs immediate attention. We included in our bid overtime as necessary to complete the project and sod for the, the lawn repairs at the end of the project, so you guys can meet your deadline. So if you have any questions on it, I could, you know, talk to you, try to answer anything that I could at this point.
Brenda?
No.
Do you want to speak to that? I mean, about the status? You don't want to do?
I'm doing.
So for the splash pad project and the bid that your company actually submitted, a full bid for, everything was in order.
Yes.
We had worked with our engineers on the cost estimates.
Okay.
And we have funding related to the splash that comes down through grants. So we have a budget that we were looking to adhere to, and unfortunately, given the cost in increasing in products and labor and such, it was, the estimate was just too far over what we had estimated and planned for. So, you know, we're, we're looking at all other alternatives, but right now, unfortunately.
And we want to do it right.
We do.
Is this on hold, then? The splash pad's on hold?
At, at this moment, you know, we're revisiting with Vortex any other options. Actually, there's a meeting that's happening right now that, that I couldn't go to, so here. But, you know, we're looking at every option that we have available. But unfortunately, what COVID has done, and I'm sure you're aware of this, with the supply chain, you know, if there's a missing part from the splash, the splash isn't going to work. So we have to make sure that everything can be in on time, and then clearly, we have, there's a lot of site prep for that.
The deadline is one that we created.
We did.
And it's, it's not something that we are required to do. So we're, we're progressing, and we're working on it, but we haven't given up on the thought, and we plan on going forward, but at this point, we're kind of on hold.
Okay. Just so everybody's aware, we did a splash park in Scranton, a Lambreno Splash Park, and they're very complicated. There's a lot of detail that goes with it to putting this together, and we, we were the general contractor on it. And, you know, that project probably cost the city about a million and a half dollars when it was all said and done at the end of the day. And if they're not put together right, they're not going to work properly. So it takes, there's a lot of detail and a lot of time spent in our office making sure these details are put in place properly so that everything works properly and it lasts a long time.
Okay.
So that's the goal of our company.
Thank you.
We're very versed in these, this project. So if there's anything at any time of his need, I'll be happy to meet with you, or if there's a change in mind, we're, we're ready to move.
Okay.
Thank you.
It'd be nice if we could get you involved, maybe, when some of, if any questions come up, that would be to our advantage, hopefully.
Yeah, the park down there, we did all the exterior piping work. We did all the spray heads, and put all the foundations in, and we worked with the, you know, the water play as far as details, you know, to make the thing that was under the frost line, make sure the pipes drain properly in the wintertime, so it was very easy for different administrations to come in and drain the pipes so you wouldn't have any issues. So there, there's a lot to it. It's not, it's not a simple construction project, so that's why they're expensive. You know, and every time we bid them, they're generally over budget because they take, they're very time consuming.
Good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much, everybody. Have a nice week.
You, too.
Anyone else? Okay. Commissioners Other Business.
We'll talk about the VigilNet contract.
Yep.
If we can, thank you. The VigilNet contract, the contract, we tabled this at last month's meeting. There were some questions that Madam Commissioner Dominic and some others had with regards to some of the modifications within that agreement. VigilNet is the provider for what's often referred to as the SCRAM bracelet, which is used in, in our criminal proceedings and through our probation office to help monitor and supervise and, and track individuals who are placed on that. There were two modifications that they were looking to undertake to the agreement. The first was removing a, a seven percent fee, which the county received from VigilNet, and that sought to be removed at this time because previously, the county was doing some of or all of the collection work for VigilNet to try to get in the monies that perhaps some of the defendants were behind on or did not pay. We no longer do that. As a county government, we've gotten out of that business, and we should not be in that. So the first part of the contract seeks to remove the seven percent fee, which is appropriate because we're not seeking or we're not providing that service any further. The second part of the modification was VigilNet sought to increase the daily fee, which is due to each individual who's placed on SCRAM. I believe right now, Commissioner Dominic, it's eleven dollars a day, is it?
Yeah, so there are three different types of SCRAM. Regular SCRAM, SCRAM with something, and then SCRAM with something else.
Right, right.
Mr. Jeffers may know from his prior position, but they were eleven dollars a day. So I, I spoke to David Beck and John Angler, Angler?
Yes. That's correct.
But on, 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 on May twenty-fifth, I wanted to see in the original contract if the seven percent fee sharing was specifically tied to the performance of duties, or if it was a pro, like a profit sharing, like we, we sometimes get, like, for example, vendors at the prison. And when I looked at the original agreement, the seven percent fee was, in fact, specifically tied to a list of tasks that were being performed by the county, which are no longer being performed. So they were, we, we more or less split the baby, as they say in, we say in court. We agreed to get rid of the seven percent, but they wanted to increase the three different types of SCRAM by, from eleven to twelve dollars a day. And I, I just didn't think that was smart to do because, number one, there's still two years on the contract, so there's no motivation for us to do that. But more importantly, it's already difficult for a lot of defendants, particularly the indigent defendants, to pay eleven dollars a day, let alone another dollar a day for these, for these devices, if it's part of their sanctions by the court. So the agreement that they were supposed to send, it's actually going to be called the Second Amendment because there was a First Amendment. The original contract was from two thousand seventeen, and it was a three-year. And then in twenty twenty, we did a First Amendment extending the contract for four years. So I think it's set to expire at the, the end of May of twenty-four.
I think it's May of twenty-four, yes.
So it'll be called a Second Amendment to the original contract. The seven percent fee sharing will be eliminated, but the fees to the defendants who will be using the SCRAM will remain the same.
And we simply wanted to bring it up at this time, as it was tabled at our last meeting, so that we can commence with the new contract, and then we'll move forward, and we can ratify the same at our next, at the next meeting.
Okay. That's great.
When I talked to them, they were just waiting for their, their legal department just to make those changes.
Right.
So I can have Shannon follow up.
Okay. Commissioner Schermak?
Uh, thank you to the German Borough for having us here today. The birthplace known as the birthplace of first aid. That's important to me as a first responder, I'm sure to many others. And just a shout out to our small but mighty Bureau of Elections, that are hard at work doing their recount. I think, hopefully, they're done with that, but I've gotten a lot of compliments from the, the watchers there, saying that they're very efficient getting it done, so kudos to them, and that's all I got.
Okay. Yeah, as far as the elections go, any nonsense that the elections aren't run properly is absolutely ridiculous. Sit there for a day and watch what goes on in Lockawana County. If anyone runs it, every other county runs it like we do. There's no issue, not even, you know, everybody can make a mistake, but there's no widespread, and there's absolutely no fraud involved.